One who wants to talk about the town plan? Or have...
Did anybody call this?
I'm texting.
She knew there was a meeting tonight. I talked to her about it earlier this... So I don't know if she had a problem or what. But, uh... So, I guess this suggests if we... We ask for comments, if anyone has anything about the town plan, correct? Which I'm assuming there isn't, because we've had numerous things. If no one has anything to say... What about you, Ms. Tammy?
She's here to represent the town plan, right?
The planning commission, yes. I'm here representing the planning commission.
Okay.
So believe if no one has any comment, does that mean the flood floor gets to talk?
I think that's it.
I guess that's it. Do you have anything? Do you have any input that we need to know? I mean, we've gone over it numerous times.
Right. No, I think...
And your department has gone over it numerous times with... After you took over from Marcel's demise.
Um, no, Matt Bachelor from when the regional... Great job of putting this together for us. We're looking forward to working on the next...
Phase.
Piece of this.
So I move that we adopt the new updated town plan?
I second.
Okay, the motion been made and second to adopt the new town plan. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Tammy, you said that you look forward to the next phase of implementing. What is that?
Uh, so we have subdivision regulations, flood hazard regulations, and zoning regulations.
Oh, okay.
That all need to be updated. So I think we found some money for the flood regs and we, um... I'm going to apply or in the process of applying for grant for the zoning regs. And I think we want to try to incorporate the flood regs and the subdivision regs into the zoning regs.
Oh.
Does that all make sense?
So the agenda doesn't have a public comment section?
Well, we got done with the hearing. Now we'll ask for public comment. Is there anyone that has public comment that is not about something that's on the agenda? Hang on. How you doing, Derek?
Oh, right here.
Hi.
Um, do you mind if I sit there?
Sure.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Mark Press, by the way.
Hey, Mark. Mark Press.
Press.
Press, and I appreciate it.
He sends a bunch of information through, 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 uh...
Yeah.
So, um... I didn't really understand, just to...
Well, that's why...
I don't really know what is you're looking for. I mean, we know there's an issue there. We've been dealing with it for...
Right.
About a year.
So I thought it would be important to sort of, um... Address what the concerns are of the people who live on Rogues Ridge Road.
Oh, okay, yep.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Lucia's on her way.
Okay, whatever.
And, um, what I'd like to...
So which half the road do you live on?
I live on the side with...
Rogues Ridge side?
I'm on Rogues Ridge.
Okay.
Okay. And, um, it would be useful if you... This is one of the documents I sent over. It's this tax plat map. Um, but I'm gonna just make reference to this, because then everything can be...
Have you got an extra one of those?
It's on our emails.
Yes, right there.
Right here.
But I do have an extra. It should be needed.
I drew a much prettier one.
Uh, Mr. Schwartz, you do appear here and there in some of these documents.
Yeah, I saw that. Although you're missing a whole series, but that's okay.
No, I mean, I... This is what I was able to pull together, and I certainly didn't try to pull every deed and document that was part of the Signal Hill development. I tried to keep this as straightforward as I could. But in any event, so looking at this map, you can see...
Are you 19? Are you that one that's highlighted?
I am 19.
Okay.
That is my lot. 18, um, is the back. These are the occupied lots on this part of Rogues Ridge. 18, 19, 24, 27, 30.
Hey, they came from back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So those are their lots. Um, the Horowitzes live at 30. I think some of you know Ray. And then on the downside here, you can see that there were some lots across the street, 17, 20, 23, 25.
Those are all Hunter lots, right?
Those are Virginia Hunter lots.
She passed.
She passed, so it's right there. I think this is all now on Robert's son, Robert. And on the, what I'll call the look, the upside of Rogues Ridge Road, beyond 30, 33, 37, 40, and 45 are also Hunter lots. Okay? Um, so when I purchased my home, and when Ray purchased his home and the other people, um... They're all... Everybody's a first-time owner, or they're a second owner of a home on Rogues Ridge that I pointed out. And if you look at the documentation, it's very clear that there's a right-of-way granted to all of the owners. And we each have an obligation to maintain the road, which is based upon the number of lots.
Right, that's something that Jerry Sulka did for Dave Hunter, who had developed Rogues Ridge.
Correct, right.
As you, I think you know, is that... Robert Hunter actually owns those roads.
Yes, he does. He does. I was gonna point out, which was a surprise to me, but when I looked at the deed into Virginia Hunter, in fact, there's 6.5 acres of roadway, not clearly delineated. But it looks as if, on a deed that was maybe marked up by you, Bill, shows the approximate...
No, that was marked by me.
That's not me.
Oh, okay.
That pink was marked by me.
Okay, anyway. So he actually owns the road which runs from Lot 45 all the way across to Lot 29. Now, what that ultimately means is there's an ownership aspect of it, but everybody's obligated, because these things run with the land, to maintain the road. And so you really...
So you have a maintenance agreement?
We have a maintenance agreement. We're subject to the Declaration of Protective Covenants, which I included, which was put in place back in 68, and has now been brought forward by these road maintenance agreements as well. So we're all subject to that.
Yep.
So if you look, for example, now here's where things, you know, went a little sideways, we think. We heard that, um... Randy Amadon, who I believe owns 32, 34... Well, he's now sold 29, 32, and 34. There are now homes on 29, and there's a home on 32 and 34. They bought two lots. In the deed, um, into the person who purchased 29, which by the way, is across the street from Ray and Jan Horowitz, Kasrabi, he makes...
Oh, that's why you sent Jessica Kasrabi.
Yes, yes, and I've got the deeds, the other deeds, but it's the same language. When he describes, when his, whoever put the deeds together, describes, um... The roadway.
No problem. It's all right. Well...
Oh, no, my two dogs made an escape over the fence.
Okay, that's all right. We're all set.
Okay.
Just worried.
Yeah, she's not.
He includes himself, frankly, I just think it's self-serving language, but he says that...
Who did?
Um, Amadon in these deeds.
Okay, right, so Kevin O'Toole wrote this, uh, actually says Randy Gilmore, that...
But he says in here, "Any and all fee interest granters may have in and to the lands and premises depicted on the aforesaid map as Rogues Ridge Road parent, now Moose Hollow Road." He's already decided that it's Moose Hollow Road. And what I... If you take a look at this plat map, Rogues Ridge Road ends about midway along Route Lot 34.
Is that where the dot is?
Yeah.
That's that dot.
Mm-hmm.
That's that dot.
Yeah, that's what I would assume, yeah.
Right, so you have Lot 29, which is now across from Horowitz. By its deed says, oh, that's Moose Hollow Road. So you have a situation in which, based on... Which I don't think you have the right to do, but claiming that 29 is Moose Hollow Road, but 30 is Rogues Ridge, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And you have a similar situation, although it's a little different, 32 and 34, which are on Rogues Ridge, being described as Moose Hollow Road.
So was there, was it, there was a piece of proper... There was a piece of this that was not a road up until just recently, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that was filled in?
Yep.
By, I assume, by...
Yeah, it was, uh, we, it was built in by Mr. Amadon.
Okay.
Um, there...
I didn't think this was over.
Yeah, no. It was, it was scrub.
Kasrabi?
Yeah.
Oh, you're saying 29 because it has a 47 on it?
I can answer that Kasrabi 911 problem. So when he recently bought...
Yeah?
The 911, when Scott reached out to Trevor at the state, he said he had to use the new numbering system, which that one, I believe, is 427. And Moose Hollow. And that's what the state forced him to use because of the whole road screw-up. He wasn't allowed to give a new number for Rogues Ridge, which it should have been, right across from Horowitz. So that's how that...
So Horowitz is number 30, is that?
Correct.
Which, the road starts down there. You would think that it would stay Rogues Ridge to there, but now they're trying to change it to Moose Hollow.
Yep. Yes.
But when you, I'm just a little, so...
Sure.
Because, you know, we have tax map numbers, and then we have original lot numbers.
Right.
So when you said, when Kasrabi bought 47...
It's 29.
Are you sure?
Twenty, yes, 29 is the tax, is the tax map number.
No, uh, but there's another 29 in there, but that's...
The 47 in the circle in the upper left-hand corner?
Yeah, the other one is 29 right there.
Yeah.
Jesus, this is...
It is confusing.
Uh, yeah, just a little bit.
Well, I mean, tax map and lot numbers are never the same.
Right, so... Oh, boy, yeah, okay, I'm, I'm kinda...
But we're sure, Beth, you're sure that 47 is 29, right? Do you know that?
Uh, I don't, I can't verify that. But I can verify the whole situation with the Kasrabi 911 number. I did speak to Scott about this last night. His suggestion, being the year 911 coordinator, is to block the road off and end the situation.
Well, that's what I had said a year ago.
Wait, hold on. Be done with it.
You know, I...
And you got two roads, but they don't go through?
That's correct.
I said to you, so I grew up in a suburban development, right?
So it's, I couldn't...
Yeah, Green Acres, it was called that. Literally called Green Acres. And, and, and Green Acres had a shopping mall that was associated with it, Green Acres. Shopping mall, big mall.
Really? Literally, you were going to Green?
Green Acres, yeah, really was. Green Acres, yeah. I know the song. So, uh, but you could not drive through. There were blockades.
Yeah.
There were fire, they were there for fire, but there were blockades that stopped you from driving into the shopping mall area. And all it is is a big blockade. We don't even have to put... I mean, there was talk about Randy should put the stones back. Well, first of all, it's not even Randy's road. So, I mean, if we wanna have Trevor jump a bunch of dirt and dirt...
Which the problem is, it's not a, not a town road.
Right.
This is all private road.
Right.
Both sides, right?
But what he's, what he's done by this, he's, he's created a situation, and this is...
I didn't think the situation was over.
It's not his private road, yeah.
I didn't think the situation was over when, when they came in and, and it's, oh, yeah, okay, fine. Call it Moose Hollow. But I didn't think it was over at that point. I knew we had not heard the end of it.
So it's not his road, no matter what. It's now Robert Hunter's roads. And, I mean, I would expect that we could probably ask Robert, and I don't think he had any problem with authorizing us to put the barricade up that says, you know, "No through traffic." Rogues Ridge, Moose Hollow, put a sign up.
Yeah, I mean, to be fair about it, I mean, our, our, look, you could have a situation if you let it go as it is, where, you know, somebody's hurt or injured and the ambulance or the fire...
You can't, you can't have two roads that run from one to the other unless it changes towns.
Right.
That can be this, can be two different names.
Yeah.
So, and Rogues Ridge, people have been there, I believe, a lot longer than...
From 2006. Longer than, 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 uh...
Moose Hollow.
Moose Hollow, yeah.
Yeah.
So... What I was gonna say is 34 and 32 have...
Excuse me, just a moment. I got somebody who...
Uh, Bob Hunter is fully aware of this situation as of last Thursday. I brought a phone, so I brought it up to speed on what's going on. Um, and like Bill said, I don't think he'd have a problem having it barricaded off.
So in other words, we would have Moose Hollow on one side, we'd have Rogues Ridge on the other, and you can't get through there.
Which is how it used to be, until when he took out, I didn't even know what was there.
It was, it was just scrub. It was scrub, and he had to raise up the roadway and improve it. He quest, uh, you know, clearly he's developing those lots on Moose Hollow, which is fine.
Which is his, is right, but it just, it, you know, yeah, I don't, it's pretty tough to rename a road after people live there.
With that aside, of course.
Yeah, exactly. No, I, I understood that. And, and I was not surprised at the readdressing the situation. All right, so what do you, Bill, what do you want? What do you suggest? You have a lot more experience in this than, than we do.
Right.
That's what I'm referring to.
I mean, ultimately, is it...
So where this dot is...
I think we should get permission from Hunter and the town. I don't, I don't have a problem with the town.
We could put a couple, loads of gravel in there, whatever.
Or put a jersey barrier.
So, number 34, the dot...
Well, you could do something a little nicer.
Well, I'm not, I'm not getting into that.
If we're trying to get something...
We're, we're just trying to get to the bottom. We'll, we're worried about a second. But, so just so I'm, I'm clear, where, where this sign says Rogues Ridge Road and it points to a dot between, just to the right of number 36, that is the point in question, is that correct?
The point in question, could I just bring my...
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm just going by one of the maps that you sent me, that you sent us.
You take a look at that.
Yeah, no, I am totally familiar.
So here's, here's where it says Rogues Ridge here, okay? And it, and I assume it comes to that dot.
Right.
Now here's number 34.
There's 34.
Right, so is this, is this where we're saying Rogues Ridge came to before?
Yes.
And this came over to here, but he filled it in and tried to make it one?
Yes, correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
Oh, that is mine.
Well...
So is your main problem that they took the barrier up, or that there are two different names of the road?
Well, they're trying to rename it, so they, they've got...
If the barrier wasn't, if the barrier wasn't...
They're, they're trying to, because we...
No, 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 no. Rogues Ridge, you wanna keep Rogues Ridge and Moose Hollow, but they're not connected anymore, the way they've been forever.
Their, their point is, they have an address of Rogues Ridge. Just, just a minute, we got, we got two different conversations going.
I'm trying to, because I'm trying to figure out where the development is on Moose Hollow. There are two new houses out there.
Okay, well, he, I think that that was 29 and 32, is that correct?
29 and 32, but on 30, but the person who built on 32 also owns 34.
Yeah, but, but whatever, but that's, that's, that's where the new homes went in there. 20, did, have you seen that on there?
Yeah, I was...
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, Julie. I just, I just think we'll have, I just think we'll have two conversations going, 'cause I have a hard enough time keeping up with one.
No.
Um, so, so that is...
Where the dot is, is what we're talking about.
Is the end of Rogues Ridge. And that's where it always was.
It might, frankly...
Within a few feet. I don't, I'm not, I'm not getting down to, I'm not getting down to inches and, and et cetera, but that's about where it was.
Yeah.
So, number 34 could still come out from Moose Hollow. I mean...
Well, it's owned by the same, but 32 and 34 is owned by the same people.
I, I understand. But I'm saying the, we don't have to eliminate this whole piece of road. We just have to barricade it so that there's a Moose Hollow and there's a Rogues Ridge. And, and then, so, do you agree with that theory, Bill?
Yeah, I'm just looking, I mean, there's the, the old, I don't even think anybody uses it. There's the, another piece of road that goes right in between.
Yeah, but that, that right-of-way was at some point contemplated in the, in the plan.
Right, originally.
So that's not there.
In that road.
It's not developed.
No, but it is thinking that maybe the spot to put the brake is there.
That would work as well?
I mean, they're just...
Right, okay, and so move it somewhat closer to the edge of 34.
29 and 30, the people that just built their houses, whoever those guys are, and 29...
29 and 32.
That, yeah, then those...
And they, and they seem to get the benefit, what I, which I suspect was probably told to them, that they can, they can go out along Rogues Ridge, which is quicker.
Well, they have to go out along Rogues Ridge, right?
No, 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 you're, you're saying the people from Moose Hollow?
The people who... The, the, where those new homes are?
That's, that's, you're right, but that, that isn't, we, we can't solve that problem.
No, I'm just saying that they probably were told that they could go out that way. Because I'm gonna make it...
So the problem is Scott isn't here tonight, and he's...
He said you could, he could phone in if you needed him.
He's the 911 coordinator. And do we want to get Scott on the phone to try to...
I don't know. I would just say, subject to, you know, you have Hunter's phone number.
I have his email.
So subject to, so I probably have that too, actually.
Right, I just, we can't...
Subject to discussion with Scott, I, I would, I'd be in favor of, you know, yeah, putting the, putting it, I'd put it right where that unused right-of-way is.
Right, near, near the corner of it to leave it so that that... Was that a part of Rogues Ridge? The, the undeveloped leg?
No, because it ended where the dot is. So there was a small portion there.
That dot is where, is where the, is where Rogues Ridge ended, pretty much?
That dot, that dot on the tax map is just to draw attention to that roadway for that tax map.
Right, so, so really...
Doesn't designate...
Right, that's to say the name of the road.
Correct.
Right, that's, I'm wondering if that's where it was, because Hunter's lot, you pointed out, go all the way back to, you have 45.
Yes.
Well, what did you start to say, sir?
My name's been mentioned a few times.
At least it wasn't in vain.
To make it clear.
At least it wasn't in vain.
Rogues Ridge Road functionally and visually ended at Lot 30, which is my lot, okay?
Oh, it did?
At 30?
Absolutely, for 20 years. And we assumed that that was where Rogues Ridge Road ended. But then when we looked at various maps, some of which you have, the actual Rogues Ridge went to that little mark, that little glitz on the map, where that cross-section of the road could have gone through. And it, it seems to us, and I can't speak for Dave Hunter, that he probably ended the road where his property development...
He was, he was in the...
Dave was the one who developed the property.
Dave Hunter.
Okay.
Nothing to do with Virginia.
We have no relation to the other Hunter family.
Okay, because, and I keep hearing Hunter, 'cause I know two, three, two, three Hunters. So that's why I'm getting...
No, no, D and L, Bill...
They don't admit to any relation, so we assume they don't.
Okay, now...
But it ended at my property, and we presume now...
Which is number 30.
30.
So you're on the...
Well, you know what, I, let's, we shouldn't confuse where it was thought the road ended and where the developer just said, "I'm done."
But, but, but the problem is, if we do this, you're gonna be on Moose Hollow.
No. What I'm saying is it used to end at my driveway. We now know that officially, functionally, it ended at my driveway. No cars pass my driveway. Now you've got Rogues Ridge Road really ending over here, according to the maps. So what we're discussing is, do we bring it back to the way it was, which ends at my property, 30, or do we now move it up to 300 feet, whatever it is, to end according to the maps that show where Rogues Ridge should end? And then Moose Hollow is beyond that. I, I just wanna mention something about that.
Because, because if, if you've been on Rogues Ridge all along, then we assume that that, that that is where the, the end of Rogues Ridge is down between 27 and 30. Your, your, your next-door lot is 27.
There's the 69, Beth.
No, 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 no. This is where, where Ray is referring to where it was just now rushed, was looking at it, it's to the left of 30, not to the right.
Towards, one second, Beth, does the 69 map, the original development map, show that entire road as Rogues Ridge?
I, I can't tell you that. I was top man, but I think they're downstairs and...
'Cause I'm just thinking, like, the more I look at this, and I never looked at this issue before, 'cause it was not my issue. Mine was just, and I ended up not, I ended up, uh, I only did some of the transfers. What happened was, I don't know if you understood what happened, but what happened was, and you have one of the deeds here, what happened was, a bunch of related people and their siblings all took it from Nat Greenberg when he went upside down. Uh, Amadon also got his property that way, but Hunters and Colclose and original people that, original investors in this thing got the land, and Hunters got, but it was in, it was in like five different families. I, I did two or three deeds, it's, it was hellacious. People had died, we needed to get death certificates, or the spouse could do it. And I did two or three deeds, and then I'm not exactly sure, I have to look back, but for some reason or another, I gave it up to a Furman Rutland, uh, Jack Facy's office, and I believe that he finished getting the rest of the conveyances. Actually, I gave it to Kevin O'Toole, and then I think it went to Jack Facy's office.
Whatever.
It, it's all in a Bob Hunter's name.
It's all in Bob Hunter's name now, because Virginia passed. But it took a lot to, to get there, but I'm thinking, and I never looked at this issue, maybe the whole road is Rogues Ridge, and then Moose Hollow's just something Randy made up.
He, he had to, because the roads didn't connect, so he had to come up with that name, so he...
Yeah, but the road connects in the survey. Like, our maps show it connecting, so what is this 69 survey?
Can I just, I assume Moose Hollow's a private road as well?
Yes, yeah, they have their own road maintenance agreement.
Yeah, and which he's put into the chain title, surprisingly. So if...
Okay, but, but the problem, but the problem is here, if, if we move this back to this intersection with this undeveloped road leg here,
Yeah.
that would mean you're on, then that would put you on Moose Hollow.
No, no, no.
You're, you're extending Rogues Ridge from where it was, my place, You're extending Rogues Ridge from where it was, my place, down the road into the Moose Hollow section, another couple hundred feet. It doesn't.
That's, that's.
It doesn't seem like this is our purview. It's going to be, if I can. It's going to be whether there's an incident up there, Julia, nine-one-one does not know how to get to us.
I'd really like to see that map, could I?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I think we.
Ken, I think we should recess this for a couple minutes.
Section two, Wendell Vermont.
Chinley, recess this for a couple minutes.
Sure.
Stand in here, and you can stay right there.
Okay.
But I'm gonna move on for a few minutes until we get that, because I think that that is rather important for what we're doing.
I'd just like to see what, yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna move on for a couple minutes.
Cause it doesn't look like, you know, the tax map doesn't show it as two roads.
I know, we'll, we'll get to it in a minute. Trevor sent me a message, he cannot be here tonight. He had to take his daughter somewhere.
Yep.
So, he expressed to us about the.
Cars in the roads.
Cars in the road, which are, which are a lot to do with unplowed driveways.
Oh, that's, that's.
That's a big, that's a big problem.
That's all it had to do.
And, but, well, not, not all of it, but some of it. And so, he, we, I went out and looked at some of them yesterday and today. Salt is at a little bit of a shortage, but we have enough, and they said we'll be able to get more. They just won't be able to get as much as you want. He'd been talking to Derek about it. And then, that's all we can bring up there. So that's, we're in decent shape, all of our equipment's working. We had one problem with a big truck, and they got that fixed. So, while we wait for that map, let's move on to, do we want a full conflict of interest policy tonight, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have one here?
Yeah, let's do it. A motion that we approve conflict of interest policy for elected officials.
Do we wanna wait until Beth comes up, because she's got comments about it? Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely.
All right, public safety facility, we have no more input from Goldstone?
Nothing new, no.
Okay, since our last meeting, which they gave us a big proposal. Okay, I know Debbie was gonna be here. Debbie's here. Hey Dad, you hiding back there?
I am.
Come on up. Yep.
So, I just wanted, I did the research about the tax sale, and we are allowed to, when the tax sale happens, we are allowed to reach out to people surrounding properties to let them know, let anybody know that the tax sale is happening. And also, I needed to get the approval because the letter of engagement that I need to sign, last, at last meeting, it approved for the demand letters. But I wanna have both pieces, that, the demand letters and.
So you would like from us to vote of approval to go ahead and put them, and enter a contract with O'Toole?
Kevin O'Toole.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve that, what, you've already had approval for the letters, and you need approval to go.
But she got it clarified that it's legal to do that.
Right, yeah.
And that you'd be willing to send them a letter at the time that we do that, just to try to spur interest. Okay? And Bill, do you?
I have the problem, Dan.
Okay, so, motion was made, I'll second it. Any other discussion? Home favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, okay. Thank you.
How far out is he from doing that?
He said he was sending up the letters in two weeks.
So, I have the sixty-nine map here, it's Rogues Ridge, all the way over Moose Hollow's property.
They call it Rogues Ridge.
All the way.
Cause I, it's funny, cause I was able to pull up my files from the office, and I do have these, is this one of these stuff?
So this is Moose Hollow down here. And then there's the crossroad right here. So it's clearly Rogues Ridge, all the way on what's Moose Hollow now.
Yeah.
And how's it spelled?
R-O-G-U-E-S.
The correct way.
Actually, R-O-G-U-E apostrophe S, actually.
So we should make note of that.
Yeah. I'm just trying to figure out where.
So here's the crossroad, that's not really there, but it is on the tax map.
Oh, I see, okay. And it keeps going, and it's still Rogues Ridge, right?
So then we can't drop something in the center of it.
Well, it, it, it means that Randy should never have started calling it Moose Hollow, is what, really?
Well, they wouldn't allow him to have nine-one-one numbers over here named Rogues Ridge, because they didn't connect. So he had to come up with Moose Hollow.
But he made it another name, which is confusing issue, was all Rogues Ridge.
So it either needs to be all Rogues Ridge.
It is all Rogues Ridge.
Like with the thing gone.
So unless there's something in deeds that say that that isn't a part of Rogues Ridge, which we don't.
No, his deed says, which we got, we got from Mark, his, like, the cabinet of deeds says formerly known as Rogues Ridge, but it's just something they wrote.
Yeah.
I mean, references this survey, April sixty-nine, references this survey. What do I have? These are different surveys.
There was a bunch.
Okay.
But there was, but they all had Rogues Ridge, so I only brought up the one.
No, that's fine, I've just, I've got these in my computer and.
So I don't see how we can, how we can put a block in the middle of the road, because if we do, anywhere near where we're talking, we're gonna block you off.
No, I think it's the opposite.
No, he just passed his driveway that he would do that.
I don't.
On, wait, you're many.
I'm thinking it needs to be.
On the right-hand side, looking out to the road from your.
But then you're gonna have all these people that have a road maintenance agreement.
Could I make a suggestion that might solve it, but it's, it's not my decision, obviously?
Not sure it's our decision, but we're gonna try to help you.
Maybe not, maybe not, maybe not. I don't, and I'm, and I don't believe that any of the lots that he's trying to develop, beyond Lot, if you look at the map, Forty-seven, that's the last, Forty-six, rather, is the last house.
Forty-six.
Forty-six, yeah.
Forty.
Forty, there's Forty-five.
Which is, which is on Rogues Ridge.
Which, well, but that's a Hunter, that's a Hunter lot, okay? The next one over is Forty-six. And Forty-six, there is a home there, cause I know the people who own it. And that, that had been the last house on Moose Hollow. He, he now appears to want and is in the process of trying to develop lots heading back towards Signal Hill, along what we now understand was always Rogues Ridge, and he's chosen to name those Moose Hollows. He just did it unilaterally, without any legal authority, it seems to me. But you could, as you suggested, put the block on where that contemplated right away.
But it's not gonna fix the ones that he just did, like the one.
No, but they, but they would, they would change their name, that they should be Rogues Ridge Road.
Right, but shouldn't everything be Rogues Ridge?
Well, that's, that's.
Yeah, that's.
The map says.
Right, but, but then you, then you're dealing, but then you're dealing with the same kind of, the other side of the same issue that we're, is why we brought this up. Is all the existing homes on Moose Hollow, they have Moose Hollow addresses. They've been, and they've been, I assume, their mail, their, their correspondence, their deliveries, say Moose Hollow, that's my guess. It's changeable.
All right, so.
I, I can't, I can't have a guess at this. Yeah. Yeah, their insurance, homeowners insurance.
Does, does that map show where the leg comes down, what is the lot directly across from it, Lucia? Is it number thirty-seven?
No, those are gonna be old lot numbers now on that map.
Yeah, but they're on here, still on the tax.
Correct.
What have you?
The tax map is not that map.
What's that?
Yeah, it is. So, see this little forty-nine circle?
That's what I said.
There's the little circle.
The circle numbers are the original numbers.
Yeah, so, the one that says thirty-seven in big numbers is forty-nine on the original.
Right. Okay, and which else are you at, Mr. Horowitz?
Thirty.
Is that your nine-one-one number? Right.
But that's not the lot number. What's your lot number?
He's Lot Six, Six, on six map. He's Six.
Okay, cool, but that is a show.
You gotta, you gotta go back the other way, I think you're going the wrong way.
It's probably Six, maybe.
So you're.
This may be.
Some of these are newly developed.
Here's the Horowitz lot, that's Six.
The newly developed ones are over here, right?
Here's Signal Hill Road.
Correct.
And then it comes up here, turns at the top of the hill, and he followed to about here.
But that's not really there.
And Rogues Ridge being this here.
Yep, yep. So, okay, so that's why I'm a little bit confused, because this map shows it on the other side of the road, in a different place. That's why I'm. Okay, so you're on the left-hand side of the road, going in on Rogues Ridge.
Correct.
That, that helps me a little bit. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
You can hold on to that.
I, I'm thinking it's Rogues Ridge, and.
Yeah, I knew this was.
I mean, towns can change the names, I mean, town, states, whatever cities.
I knew it wasn't over yet.
Should you wait for your nine-one-one?
I think we need.
Yeah, we definitely have, we're not making any decision, other than, you know, I feel, I feel like it should be Rogues Ridge, all the way through. That was the map said.
That clarifies a lot, because here, it's totally different things, and that's what was bothering me up. Okay. All right, so.
I understand, but Randy didn't take it out in the first place, that little hill mound or whatever, and when he started developing it, instead of calling it Moose Hollow.
Okay, so I don't think there's any, I think we're gonna have to table this, and bring it up when we can have Scott here. And I, should we notify, are, are you here all the time, or are you just?
I can always, I can be here if you'd like me to.
So do we, do we want to have them here?
I don't know that they need, I don't know that anyone.
Well, if you feel the need, I'm happy.
Well, I don't know, it might be easier if we don't, but it might be easier if we do.
I, I, you know, our meetings are open and public, so you're welcome to come at any time, but.
FYI, the next meeting is the organizational meeting after town meeting.
Our next meeting is, yeah.
Yes.
But we could also, if Scott wanted to hold a special meeting to deal with this, I, I told Scott the past about this, so he's not happy, yeah.
But this is the easy answer, it never should have been Moose Hollow. It just never should have been Moose Hollow. It never was Moose Hollow.
But it had to be when he was developing from that end to end.
All he had to do was take out, all he had to do was take the hump out back when he started, instead of now.
That's not how he did it. He started with one house, two houses, three houses.
He didn't build the rest of the road.
Okay, I, I, do you wanna table it, or we're just, we'll have to wait and get Scott in here and bring it back up?
I think.
I, I mean.
Oh, you mean the road wasn't in until he got up further? Is that what you're saying?
No, it was all grown up.
And then when he got up further, he took out the rest of the stuff and said, "Done, huh?" You know.
That's about what he did.
Right, I get it. He, he moved up. Well, it was him and Stoddard, they developed most of that.
Uh, sorry, Greg, is it?
Right.
Yeah, so, when did they, when did that road get put in, after replacement, did they do that?
We had, the development went in initially in oh-five, oh-six, and the road came up Signal Hill, went as far as my property, and it ended. Okay, beyond that was Mother Nature. There were no humps, bups, whatever. There was some trees, some bushes, some grass, some dirt. It was, and it was a good quarter of a mile beyond that, before you could see what was coming up the other one, which was Moose Hollow, coming this way. So it wasn't like the two roads ended here.
Yeah.
Rogues Ridge, Moose Hollow, and a large gap of nothing, a beautiful Vermont, whatever. Then, about two years ago, a year and a half ago, Randy Amenden came in and took down a big clump of that Mother Nature, so that he could actually connect the two roads. He went all the way down, from Rogues Ridge where we were, all the way through, and made it a single road, okay? For all of those years, there was no development down there. The new houses have gone in in the last year and a half. One across the street from me, one just beyond me, which goes into Moose Hollow, and that's it. And those two individuals, from their deeds, have been told that they're, were on a road that used to be called Rogues Ridge. But it's not, I don't know where he got the right to do that. He certainly never discussed it with us, and his neighbors, that's the way we've always done things up there. He just came in bulldozed, went through. And there's something that I learned long ago, called Occam's razor, which is a book, it's, I can't even spell it. So, but I know the name. Occam's razor is this wonderful mathematical theory that I was told years ago, that says if you have a complicated problem with a bunch of issues and many solutions, the best solution is very often the very simplest. Stop clumping your head, stop going crazy, stop getting heart palpitations. The easiest solution is very often the best. And my thinking through this whole process has been, for goodness sakes, meetings, involving all of you, involving us, when we just wanna enjoy life. Someone said to me, "For God's sakes, just have them put the rocks back, have them put the dirt back, make it two roads," and every, nobody complained for twenty-two years. And now we're trying to get into complex scenarios. Maybe we don't have the right to do that anymore.
Well, I, I think you have more right than you realize, but, but, but I'm not a lawyer, and I don't.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Al.
Now, it would just, it occurs to me that since Randy was the one that filled all that in, that he should probably, if anyone's gonna put boulders back, it should be him. Not the town paying for it.
But if we have to to get it over, I don't care, I can, we can make that work. But I, I think we have to table it for tonight, and we have to wait till our nine-one-one coordinators here, because Scott was here when the ambulance came here, and I knew this wasn't the end of it. When he said, "Oh yeah, some problem, we're just gonna do it this way," but I, I just knew it wasn't over. And so I think we have to bring it up again, but it won't be tonight, because I'm not gonna deal with Scott on the phone trying to do this thing. I gotta get him up to speed, and then we'll, so there's a, there's a possibility. I don't know that we wanna do it at the next meeting, because that's our organizational meeting after town meeting. So we're gonna be very busy that night. So we may have to wait and put it off till the second meeting in March. Okay, now, I'm sorry, you, you raised your finger.
No, no, just, my hands, too. Do we, this is a serious note, do, we, we have this nine-one-one issue, that we can't have a long stretch of roads with two names. I understand, and I, as an exposition, retired physician, that's as close to being important to me as anything could be. Do we have a situation right now, at this minute, on Rogues Ridge or Moose Hollow, with regards to these issues that we're talking about? In terms of responsiveness, God forbid if somebody were to have a, a serious illness on our road.
Yeah, that's the point.
Do we, do we ever power it up? That's part of the point, yeah, absolutely. I mean, the only, and, and we just have to get through it, and, and the only saving grace is that it's a relatively short road. So that we're gonna be from one to the other, and, I mean, it's, it probably, we can get from one end just as quick going in this way as we can from this way. So I'm not too worried about it for tonight, but we definitely have to get it solved. I knew this wasn't the end of it. So I guess we better put it off till our second March meeting. Do we wanna do it the first one, which is gonna be busy because it ended that meeting?
Yeah, I think we need to do it the second meeting of March.
If we can, if we can have Scott here, because.
We need to have Scott here. Well, that would be Scott's normal meeting, would be the second meeting of the month, anyway, cause that's, yeah. And so.
That would be March nineteenth.
Twelve.
Twelve.
No.
No.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
March nineteenth.
Because we need to get everyone, all the parties here, it seems like. This is, that mean, there's multiple.
And then we can have him a little bit more of a chance to check on it. I, I know it's.
In the meantime, there are lots selling. Can we, will you give us permission to put all nine-one-one access permits on hold?
You mean for that road?
Yes.
Yeah, well, it'd be on hold if they come here anyway.
Okay, great.
I would, I would say so.
Okay.
No point in assigning it to them, and then, and then they start bringing stationery and all that stuff, we, we might.
Beth, how many actual homes are there now?
I can't give you that count, but it's a lot, Julie.
Just on the Moose Hollow side of it?
No, on both ends.
Both sides.
There's, there's about five.
And I have five lots.
Five on Moose Hollow.
I have about five lots that are going, that are closing, I would say in the next two to three weeks.
Okay. All right, I think that's what we better do. But thank you, and we'll.
Sure.
We'll have.
You can have my contact information in my email, which is all that. Feel free to reach out.
All right, so I think we should tentatively plan it for the nineteenth of March, because we're gonna be really busy on the night after town meeting. And there's no, we don't wanna hurry this, we gotta, we gotta spend the time to just get it done. Okay, thank you for your input. Thanks for coming in. Sorry, we have an issue here, but let's try to get to the bottom of it.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is it press? Is that?
Yeah. Put this in your, on the press for now.
While, while we're, have a map out, I would just like to bring something up.
Come on up.
See that map there?
No.
Two foot by three foot?
Can't see it now.
Right, so, right now, we only have storage for maps this big. We have three-foot by four-foot ones that, at this moment, are actually, they're folded over, so you can't really read them properly. So we do have a, a quote-out for a bigger map.
Is this a sole vendor thing?
Yep, and we have the sole source vendor right here, and I've checked with other companies, and nobody offers map, hanging map tabs or anything.
Yeah, I'm just, this is in their, they have it in their budget, and it's in their purview, and you're just saying you don't have to put it out for an RFP, cause it's a sole source, right?
Yep, so you just, you guys, you guys are good with it?
So you're gonna do something for it, Alex?
Yep. Perfect.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, it's under the amount where we would have to have put it out for RFP anyway.
Yeah, but because they're sole sourced, they're the only ones that make that.
What's, who, can you do that, are you making a motion, or?
I don't know, do we need to make a motion on that, Bill?
What's the dollar?
Five thousand, fifty-five hundred, it's underneath, yeah.
Yeah, you have to commit a debate.
Byokunius.
Do we need to vote on that?
No, it's under, we don't have.
That's, that's under his, that's under his purview.
I just doesn't need a, it's, it's under.
The seventy-five hundred.
We have, you have a vote of confidence from us.
My number's seventy-five hundred, that needs to be five thousand.
But I mean, we can tell him that we agree that he should be doing that.
Yes.
Okay, Alzak?
Yep, thanks.
All right. All right, conflict of interest. We were, we headed for that, and so I guess we're gonna bring that up. Anyone wanna talk about conflict of interest for, uh, policy for elected officials?
So, we are being required by the state.
I did make a motion, didn't I?
Oh, you just.
We, we stopped because someone was missing from the room. You may have some input.
Oh, that's right.
Is that true?
Oh, yes, you had some input on the conflict of interest, that's why we stopped.
Well, I've, I've never seen where the state is requiring us to do that, so I guess I'd wanna see that before.
Wasn't that the ethics?
Yeah, it's statutory.
Let me find it.
In the auditors.
Well, the auditors, yeah, but it's actually.
The auditors just make suggestions to you guys. As elected official, I don't officially work for you, so it's hard for me to sign something, not just the ethics policy, but anything that you force me to sign.
Right, I mean.
That's my issue, is I don't work for all these people.
The auditors make suggestions, and if we feel that that is in the best interest of the function of the town, then we can adopt it. We don't have to adopt it unless it is a law that we have to adopt it. Am I correct?
I'm looking through my email to try to find, it was an ethics policy that had to be put in place.
Well, no, it suggested.
I guess the other thing is.
No, this wasn't the auditors, this was the state.
Yeah.
I guess the other thing is, if I don't sign it, what happens to me? If I choose not to sign something that you guys say I have to sign, because I don't work for you?
I mean, I think all that this says is.
But it's the start of a slippery slope, Julie, is what I'm saying. Like, what are you gonna bring next that you tell me I have to sign? Are you gonna tell me I have to work from, I don't know, five PM until nine PM? Like, how, how slippery does the slope get?
So it says here, twenty-four, ethics and conflicts of interest changes the statewide municipal code of ethics, Act One Seventy-One.
Which they're working on repealing part of it this week.
It says, "All provisions of Act Seventy-One take effect January first, twenty-twenty-five, with two exceptions. The repeal of an existing municipal ethics statute took effect on June of twenty-four, and the new ethics training requirement takes effect September of twenty-five." I mean, I can send you the link if you want, but.
Sure.
So is it, so you're saying there's some.
This is, this is VLCT's synopsis.
That's it, it was.
I could also send you the statute if you want, cause, just do both.
Would you forward it to me, cause I can't find the email right now.
Well, this isn't an email.
I would just like to be as informed as I possibly can before I, free to sign something that's kinda forced on me. It's kind of forced on me.
What act is it for? You know, I want to look it up too. Act what?
I'm not there right now.
171?
I'm not there right now.
I want to register that.
So.
Uh, this, the um.
So you're saying that this is in committee at at the legislature right now?
They just sent something out to my Tuesday.
I know, I got something too.
They were revisiting Act 171.
Okay, I was incorrect. This is what I'm remembering that we received in the beginning of January. We are reaching out with a third reminder that pursuant to Act 171 municipalities are required to appoint an ethics liaison to serve as a point of contact for communications with the State Ethics Commission. This reminder previously went out to chairs, blah 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 blah. Each municipality acting through its legislative body shall designate an employee as its that's you. Um, as its the state as its liaison to the State Ethics Commission.
This we uh we appoint uh you appointed.
Yes, we appointed Lisa.
Yeah, she is of course the liaison.
So if it's in if it's if it's in the State House and it's being worked on, I think we should hold off.
I have no problem with that.
I think we should I think we should table it or bring it up after this hearing.
Where do we say it's being worked on?
Uh, I I thought it was up for debate. I thought it was up for debate in the state right now.
Act 171.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Is that what's up for debate, Beth?
They're reviewing they're reviewing 171. That's what they put out this weekend in email.
Okay.
Yeah, I have that one too.
So, yeah, then I think the thing that you have to do, Beth, is the training.
Right, which I don't have a problem doing. I mean. I just I just think forcing an elected official who doesn't it works for the people of the town of Win Hall, like if they're gonna tell me to do something, that's what I normally do because they've elected me. As they've elected you.
I I if it's if it's in the State House being worked on, I think we should hold off and wait and see where it shivers out myself.
Yeah, I'm not seeing that anywhere, but sure.
Okay, well, let's another month didn't go making difference. We won't be able to deal with a town meeting aftermath there. Okay, public safety attacks.
Those are confusing. One Act 71, 171 has to do with the Ethics Commission, another one has to do with forests and trees. That's a little weird.
It's being run by the state. Okay, so open meeting law, the next thing on agenda. Now, this is this is probably to do with having a recording device in place. Is that correct?
We're still looking at the various options and looking to see who is doing what and how people are handling it and what the options are and how much they lost. But I have nothing from yet.
I'm sorry, what what?
We're looking.
Open meeting law, which I assume I I assume has to do with the recording.
Yeah, I sent you the note. Well, right now, we're it works with this, but we don't can't always rely on these guys because they're not always here. I did check with Lundberry.
Well, not that you don't do a good job, but sometimes you're not here.
You're not here, we have to.
And legally, we have to record you.
So the Lundberry does use the owl. They bought an owl. I don't know what it is, but that's what they bought. I know you Tammy and you had looked into that at one point.
We have an owl in the office.
You what?
We have an owl at the office, but it's so that we can host remote meetings.
At your office, you mean?
Have all the people at the table.
Oh, so you know how it works. Is it it's easy to run?
But if it's simply if technically according to the new law, all we need to do is provide an audio recording.
But either.
So we could just set a phone in the middle of the table.
Suggest that you don't use a personal device to do it.
Who's who's phone? Who's phone?
No, you should, yeah, you should.
So we gotta set something up.
He said he the VLCT, the gentleman from VLCT said, I don't care if you put a tape recorder in the middle of the table and record it.
Well, except that you have to upload it.
But then it has to be.
It has to be uploaded.
Transcribed after that.
Doesn't have to be transcribed because that's where Lucia comes in with the minutes, but it does have to be uploaded to the website for 30 days.
Yeah.
And then after 30 days, it can come down. The audio recording.
Right, I mean, it is, yeah.
You should look at.
And you're not covered on that. You're not covered. Uh, the Gnet doesn't come to your meetings.
You know, with the website.
Yeah.
And Gnet doesn't come to the BCA meetings.
I just told Lisa Lisa should look at whatever works best with our website and her computer just to upload.
I'm just just curious. So they said that they only have to be on the website for 30 days.
The audio recordings only have to be accessible for 30 days.
The statute says.
Well, you have to have minutes. So you still have to have minutes and those minutes after the same goal applied for minutes, they have to be available to the public at one time.
Do you not have to keep the audio recordings forever?
No.
No, so yeah.
You only said 30 days.
Okay. That's surprising.
Although I don't see any problem with leaving them up there once they're up there unless it's like running out of space or something.
Okay. Would can you? Do you need someone else to help look at other options or have you got it under control?
I'll work on it. I'll work on it.
Okay, so you think.
And I'll work on it, Tammy, for for good.
Okay, so you think you'll have something fairly soon so that we can be in compliance?
Is this a huge expense?
No, I can't believe it.
I don't think it'd be more than a few thousand dollars.
I don't even think it's that much.
It's not dirt here, not a table.
Right, but let's get something that'll work and that we can use relatively easily. We don't want to have to do it on a tape recorder and then all darned the tape ran out or the tape broke or whatever.
And we need something everybody can use.
Exactly. We have three agencies that have to use it.
I don't want to make a decision anybody who makes a decision. So like the planning commission, when they're doing subdivisions. Or the Board of Adjustment and the BCA.
Yeah, we should just have something set up that's relatively easy to work that isn't that that is set up to work to do this. Let's make it work.
I think grievance too is one to require it.
Okay, so hopefully we'll have somebody next month, sometime next month. Okay, short term rounds. So have you gotten any people, any applications for a short term rental administrator? None?
Not yet, but it just went out. Like, it just came out. It's in the Manchester Journal.
How long ago did it?
Like, a week.
A week, maybe, yeah. It took a week to get into the journal and the banner and it's on.
It's in this current journal because I just saw it, so unless I'm looking at an old one.
Is there an online posting this anywhere?
Yeah, it's on our website.
It's on our website and it's also on the newspapers.
It's on our website, okay.
Which guy?
Well, well, the website came up.
Yep.
When we tried to we had a complaint the other day. We tried to open the ballot, the the warnings, all of that would not open. What did it say? Something about revise. Remember when you tried to open the ballot, it said revise, won't open or it's blocked or something. And it gets downstairs printed off. So we're just having a little issue, I think, maybe with some of the documents.
Right, we go downstairs.
So have you guys spent any time on it?
Right by the cemetery stuff.
Yeah.
So right now.
So we can only have one picture per agency?
No.
Well, you could have more if you'd like, but it gets what I've noticed is on slower devices, if you don't have great wifi, it just takes a lot.
Everybody has great wifi now. We're sitting on here. We're all sat.
Sure.
I, yeah, I'm not. It's not working on my phone, so it may not be mobile.
It.
In a.
What what is it? The document center?
Did you click on something or did you get to our website at all?
Yeah, I'm on our website. I'm at elections. So see, I click sample ballot.
Oh, elections.
And what do you have an option to like?
I got.
Some of the stuff is the SSL is not working very wonderfully yet.
Oh, yeah, it's not.
What like what's the little timer?
No, it's not coming up here either. It says now you can highlight your PDFs.
All right, let's see.
Yeah, I just did it too. Sample ballot does not come up. CMS3 revised dot com. Town meeting warning does not come up either.
Do any of the Nutriball part come up?
It's weird. It says it's a PDF, but it's not showing it.
Yeah, I uploaded all of them.
So is this the new one?
Did Al do the training?
Is this the new one?
Yeah.
It's not showing in my browser.
And I when I was playing.
Did you find anything?
This is what it looks like when you try to open the ballot.
Yeah, no, we.
So can I get a different thing? But okay, this is what I get.
All four links on election page are like this, Tom warning, school warning, sample ballot and voter checklist.
Yeah.
I mean, we are posted all over town, so we're legal as far as posting.
I checked from all of the links. I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, they're they're all coming up. It's they show as PDFs, but they're not showing.
Has anyone else gone through the training to learn how to do the uploads?
Okay, so we're getting we're getting we have something up. You'll you'll look into it. Thank you.
I will figure out. All the links did work at one point, and so I'm not sure what the deal is, but I will look at it.
Got a broken link.
Yeah, and they're all I when I was playing around with this, I was seeing some of this. This is the school board. I think that maybe there's just like a button, you know, like if you did it all. Like, that's working. So the BCA, the Board, the Board of Civil Authority and Abatement seems to be working.
Yeah, I went through most of them, well.
Okay, well, you check. Thank you for your efforts on it.
I'll work. I will work on it. Work on it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Uh, wait, now it's loading.
Okay, so.
Short term rental ordinance comes up.
That comes up. Okay, good.
So we have here from Town of Win Hall, Chris Campani, executive director, and this is a letter from us to him, request.
Well, that's the town plan that you just adopted. You just need to sign up.
Yes, we just need to sign.
Yeah, so I moved to authorize stewardess. Just do it for us, so.
I'm not even like, why are we here?
It was in the hearing. It already happened.
This was in the hearing.
We adopted.
You weren't here. We adopted the town plan.
Right.
I know, I know.
The Tammy portal comes up, by the way.
Oh, good, okay.
With pictures of Marcel and everything.
So we we adopted the plan. We had no questions. Uh, we are are administer our. What's your title?
Chairman.
Chairman. Our our chairman spoke about it briefly and filled us all in and there were no questions and she got done.
Yay.
So thank you for your input.
Love it.
So all right, so we're gonna sign.
Was there a motion for that one?
Yes.
Okay, and and which one of you made the motion?
I already took those minutes.
She's got that.
Oh, okay, you'll add it into mine.
Okay, so we can sign that. You want to borrow a pen, everybody?
Yeah, I have, yeah, I have one, thanks.
Okay, use one of your own.
Julie.
Julie, thank you. All right, it takes care of that. All right, so do we we don't have any access permits tonight?
Uh, no, we we were going to have one, but Trevor was not able to get out with the snowstorm.
Yeah, it's too much snow. Way too much snow in town.
All right, so minutes of the last meeting. Has anyone got any problems with what we had there? So we got all squared away with the highway department on the the dropping of town highway such and such. They were all happy with that.
Yep, the state.
And Paul was happy with that?
Yes, the Debbie mentioned today when she was looking at those draft minutes under where you all had said she could go ahead with the demand letters. You didn't put in there that then she could proceed with the tax.
She came in tonight.
She came when she was here.
You may have been down. I think you were getting the thing. You were absent during that. You we have taken care of that.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so uh so are there any problems with the minutes of that we have from last meeting?
No, I made a motion. We approved the minutes from the part.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion?
February 5th.
Own favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye. So in the document center, everything I've clicked on comes up. It's just in this election one.
Try the elections page now and see the I've I've redone the first two. See if those are working yet, would you?
Now the town meeting warning comes up.
Okay, good. I'm just I'm just gonna redo the links because it looks like they just didn't get integrated.
Oh, they're all.
And now the town, the school district meeting comes up.
Excellent, excellent.
Sample ballot still.
That one I'm still uploading.
Good, well, whatever you did, you fixed it.
So I'd be.
I'm sorry, did we get through? We skipped by uh you you talked very briefly about short term rentals.
Oh, and we also.
We have had no.
Energy committee, we need to appoint.
Yeah, but you just, yeah, yeah, but on the short term rentals, we need to authorize Lissa to sign temporarily because we're doing Lissa and I have been having team meetings regularly. Two for the last two weeks, twice a week, and then we're skipping now, I think, to once every two weeks, I'm thinking. Trying to get this thing up and running. We've asked him specifically one question, which is what Deb had brought up as well, which is, you know, we paid 25,000 bucks, give or take. And so we said, well, so like, when does it start? We haven't started. We paid that over a year ago. Like, our feeling and we'll wait to see what they come back with is, you know, we should start. They just had our kickoff meeting and it should start.
Should start now.
The latest will be the kickoff meeting.
It's over, yeah.
At the kickoff meeting.
Yeah.
You know, because also we're coming up to, you know, there's an after the year, there's a renewal with a small increase. It's not a big deal. But so that's one thing that's out there that we're waiting on. The other is they sent us some parts of the website for approval and they need someone to approve it. So I'd just like to move to authorize Lissa. I mean, I have some input, but authorize Lissa to sign as the approval.
Second.
Yeah.
So we can keep moving forward.
Yeah, so we can keep going forward till we have a short term rental person, and then they will need to change that to somebody else. Did you miss it?
This is on behalf of Gov U S. Are we talking about?
Not on behalf of Gov U S.
With Gov U S.
With Gov U S.
Yeah, she's signing. She's authorized inventory. To sign off on Gov U S's docs and website.
Okay, that is that okay? You got you got it? Lucia?
I am, yes. I I have the motion.
All right, so motion been made and seconded to authorize Lissa to coordinate this stuff with Gov U S, right? Or U S O S, oh, U S O S, AID, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, okay, all right, so you'll do that. Okay, yes.
And there's the energy committee that.
Energy committee. You wanted to add two people to it?
Mike's here.
Yes.
Oh, and 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 one of the.
Eric is here.
Proposals. I don't know. We're gonna have to vet him.
We'll have to vet him.
Okay, go on for.
So who was the other one you wanted to put on?
Armin Vitinian.
Oh, boy, you better be stalling that one.
I got it right here.
I have. I have, yes.
Okay.
So I moved to uh add Eric Moses and.
Armin Vitinian.
To and Armin Vitinian to the uh energy committee.
Motion was made and seconded, right?
Yes.
Motion's made and seconded. Uh, how big does that make your committee now?
Five.
Seven.
Seven, there's only three on the website.
Right, so so they're I think they'll make it six. One of our members had asked to step down. They had a child of their family and so.
Wait, who? Because I I'm seeing Michael on the website. It says Michael, Andrea Ammon and Victor Wodzowski.
Correct, yeah, and there's also another member that was appointed, if I can remember his name. Ward Kane was also appointed.
Oh, Ward Kane?
Yeah.
No, I didn't know that.
So he needs to be added to this committee.
Okay, Ward Kane.
Okay, that's fine, I, I just wanted some idea of how many.
So. We're doing three right now.
We're adding two right now.
But.
Eric Moses.
Right, I have those two, but now you're saying Ward Kane.
No. No, no.
Ward Kane is, is already, remember, he's not on, Lissa needs to add.
I, I'm doing it right now, cause I didn't, I didn't remember that one.
I didn't know that.
All right, motion. Motion was made.
Ryan.
Ryan, okay, Brian James, yeah, they were, yeah, probably everybody, Brian James is the other person of, of the energy committee, they were appointed last year.
So.
Brian James.
So the. Okay, so they were on it before.
Correct, so the other one is, if we have one that had the.
Who black?
Andrea Amadon.
Oh, Andrea did, so she comes off, I'm just trying to get it straight, cause Lissa's putting it up on the website.
Right.
Okay, so the motion made and seconded to add two people to the energy committee, all in favor, say aye.
And, and remove one.
And remove one, okay, that's taken care of, thank you for your, uh, efforts, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we got anything else? We, we, we signed, we approved the minutes, we're doing the bills now, um, there is one thing here that I would like to talk about, so we can.
It's right on the top of the, um, okay.
Yeah, I see that, so these are, so what are these, two different pay orders?
One's manual pays that are paid online, and the other are hard copy checks.
Oh, cool.
Okay, so, um, we had a problem with the, one of the police cruisers, and it was taken back to Bennington Auto Mall.
I'm sorry, just, did we prove these minutes that are standing here?
Yes, we did.
Yes.
We voted on it.
Well, I didn't sign them, did you?
Yeah, I'm all over it.
Oh, you signed it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, so.
Julie's. Police cruiser problem, right?
Right.
Wanted with the diesel, but maybe it wasn't, is that?
Well, my limited knowledge of automobiles.
Yeah, you can go study down at the, what's it called?
Yeah, I know, well, I'm actually planning on going down there with the cruiser, uh, tomorrow to look at it, to look at it underneath to verify a situation.
So what is your non-professional advice there?
I think that they're, what they are saying they did is.
Are these all the receipts?
Not true, and what happened is not true.
Okay, so we wait on this.
I think we should, I think we should not pay this yet.
It's not in the pay one.
That one's not in the pay.
Right, probably not.
Because I wanna do some more research, because I think that should have been under warranty, I'm sorry about.
No, that's okay, it was something separate from the car when you get done with the.
Okay, so I'm, I wanna hold off on that, I will, I will talk to, and, and I know that code and code is not gonna even touch this, this is not, this is not anything to do with their problem that was created here.
Oh, it's not.
Pay this, the first one, it comes in the code.
Yeah, absolutely not. Absolutely not.
Is this the vendor one?
This is the twenty, twenty-three dollar.
Not my vendor, but I will call, I can, I can, yeah.
To the tune of twenty-seven hundred and forty-four dollars, which should have been under warranty, but anyways.
There's two of them still, how many miles does it have on it?
Twelve, fourteen thousand. But anyways, okay, we'll work on that, um, so I'm gonna hold off on paying that at this time, what do you got there?
So I was just gonna have you all acknowledge Lawrence's ninetieth birthday.
Woo-hoo! Correct.
Hi, birthday Lawrence Grant.
Happy birthday, Armin.
And for a hundred, he said.
Cool.
That's for him.
Yeah, great, okay, uh, we got anything else, or we're just reviewing the bills at this point, you guys are going through those?
Yeah.
So, are, are we?
That whole, I already went through all of those, that whole stack is that one bill for.
Yeah.
So, are we gonna have, are we still gonna be doing in the off weeks, uh, if we have a, a long time in between,
Running in and out.
And have somebody come in and sign them, or go?
These are, I, it would probably be helpful for you guys to have a conversation with Deb.
Okay.
I'm here.
Oh, there you go.
Um, yes, they're all on the thing.
So, yeah, we're, we're, we're just reviewing the bills now, and some of them are manual pay, and some of them are, are electronic or whatever.
Yeah.
Do, do you find, find it an advantage to us on a, a long session between meetings to have a, see Eric, thank you, to have a, um, one signature on a pay order in between so that you get them out quicker, or don't you care?
No, I don't mind doing it on an off week, um, Lissa and I have been talking about the manual pays and deciding how we're gonna set it up and doing all of that, but, so, we're just starting the process.
Okay, so you'll, so if, if you're gonna have one that we need to do, you will advise us the same way you had advised us, if you have another pay order.
Yeah, yeah. And the manual pays, we are starting to pay things electronically so that we avoid late fees, and then you will retroactively approve those at the next meeting.
Right. Is this Navr bill, two bills, one for one-one, and one for two-one?
It's two bills, yeah.
That's for, that's for shorts.
Assessment, oh, this is then doing the reappraisal, town reappraisal.
They mail them to us, and I don't know why they never, we never got that other one that they highlighted as being.
They've started, I haven't heard anything from.
Well, they're starting down.
Yeah, they started, they started all, yeah, the beginning of the world there.
We started on October.
Oh, I don't think we've left math.
That's the other half, that's the manual pay.
Ah.
The manual pays, just make sure they stay separate from the other ones.
I just pulled the clips off and mixed them all together, shuffled them.
Okay.
I mean, this pile, it's one pile, two piles, isn't it?
It's not really my problem, I guess. We just did it in two piles, cause they were all clipped together, so.
What?
So.
Isn't this the manual pay pile?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, um, one good note is that we have been approved for the grant for the equipment.
I saw that.
For the, uh, fire department, so that's a great thing. Now, can I start, get you some pictures and information on the equipment that we have to sell, so that you can list it? Because that's gonna be a bid process from what I understood.
Um, well, I think it, it depends on what it is too.
We have three pieces of equipment, we have an old ninety-three Honda four-wheeler, we have a twenty, twenty-one, no, tw- a twenty, that one's a two thousand two Arctic Cat four-wheeler, and then we have a two thousand two Arctic Cat Soulville.
So, do we have proof that the town bought those, or did the fire department buy them?
The fire department bought them, but, but the way the motion, the, the way the motion came that Julie made, was that we would sell them through the town, and the money come back to be reinvested in the account for the equipment fund. Now, if we want to rescind that, and we take care of some, I don't care, I'm just trying to fulfill the way it was voted on at the, when we approved the money.
Because we were taking money out of the fund.
But we're putting it back.
But if the town doesn't own them, I don't know how we could sell them.
So then.
I'm not, I don't know, I don't know.
Oh, you're talking, I think we used equipment.
You, we have three pieces of used equipment.
Right.
Right.
So I don't think I knew that the fire department owned them, I thought that they were.
Yeah, okay, all right, so, can, can I have a re-clarification of that, that, that we, that we will deal with it at the fire department level?
Is that our, the police stuff too, or?
No, no, they don't have anything, all of their stuff is new, or within a few years.
No.
So.
Okay.
Um, this goes back in here, these are signed, these are signed, uh, we're gonna make the motion that we approve the bills of the manual pay.
Yes.
Yes.
That was motion made and seconded, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Julie is almost done with the electronic pay.
Well, the confusing part is that manual pay means online.
Online.
Oh, really?
Yes.
You guys really confused me tonight with those tax manuals, I'll tell you, cause it kept coming up with, yeah.
This is Navr word.
I, no, that's cause it's, it's too long.
So how do you want it in the match, I usually just say warrant.
The, the.
Manual pay is online.
And those are.
I, I, I'm payable checks, to, like, actual.
Then I want.
Debbie will take care of it, we just.
Why are we calling it manual pay?
That's what Navr named it.
It's a manual process, so it's a manual.
So how?
I manually click a button.
Okay, just, okay, Luc, Lucia, Lucia's got a problem, a, a question.
With this, did he find out?
I'll have a father.
No, no, you got a question.
We have not seen a single thing from that. Did we get anything from the survey?
The survey, that's the survey.
Survey at Benson Fuller and Upper Taylor.
I don't know. The.
Did you see anything back?
We haven't seen anything.
I have not gotten anything.
Just, was anyone, was, who, which surveyor is it?
Who did?
Gary Rappinoe.
That's Rappinoe, did he come?
He has not, he has not been in in a long time.
I wonder what, what.
Well, I guess we should question.
I mean, he might. Right, like, do we pay that if we haven't seen anything?
He might have had documents from something else.
He may have, uh, surveys around it, so he can go through that.
Yes, I, yeah, I don't know.
Cause this is seven and a half hours office, thirteen and a half hours field survey, it's a forty-four hundred dollars.
So maybe he wants to get paid before he gives us the information?
Yeah, yeah, no, that makes sense, you don't get that, you don't, you don't.
Okay, so. Because you don't, they won't give us the information till we pay him.
Yeah, that generally works.
Oh, is that how?
Well, that's how mostly it works.
I didn't.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
So I still have a question.
I could be wrong, I mean.
Okay, just, just a second, Lucia's got a question.
Uh, under warrants, how you want in the minutes, you want.
We approved all warrants.
Manual and digital, or how, or warrants, or.
No, manual is the digital, that's what we're hearing now, so just do manual and checks, how's that?
All invoices.
Yeah, just all invoices.
We'll just do all invoices.
The payroll order, the, the pay orders for the night have been approved.
Did the pay order, do the payers have different numbers on them?
Um, there, one is dated for tomorrow, one is dated for today, because I separated.
I'm going with all invoices.
Oh, you could just do it that way, Lucia, you used to, usually you write the pay order date on it, right?
Uh, all invoices, yep, but I.
Don't you usually, don't you usually write?
Warrants.
Yeah, so we have two, so that thing just has two, so just put in two, we, we, we approved both, so there's two, there's two different dates, one's today's date, one's tomorrow's date.
Correct. All right, so, we had, we've, we've approved those.
And once two nineteen, twenty-five, and the other's two twenty, twenty-five.
Okay.
Approved both warrants.
And the motion was made and seconded and approved, correct, all in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, now, should we, not at the next meeting, because it's gonna be busy after, uh, town meeting, but, um, should we invite Stratton in for the meeting after that, so we can talk about the access road, is what we're gonna do there, cause we wanna get going on RFPs for, if we're gonna do any more.
Wait, what's that, Old Town Road, oh my god, it's falling apart, Old Town Road has like a monster.
The problem is, we've got so much water in the ground.
Yeah, it's, it's coming up right through the road, and I'm sorry, you're off track, you're off.
So, so, do you, should we invite them to come to our second meeting in March, so that we can discuss it with, with, uh, Stratton?
And Trevor will be there that meeting, second meeting.
Probably, yeah, we'll just make sure he is.
Yeah.
Um, so, is it all right if we invite them in and try to go over that, so we can get something going, cause we, we don't wanna wait till March, or April, and May, and June to start putting it out to bid, so if we're gonna get it done this year.
Right.
When, then we'll know if we got approved for the money for it too, uh, cause that's a town meeting, is there anything we have to do in preparation for town meeting, or you all sat though?
Am I all set?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm all set.
You ready, Rip, where are you going?
I got information that people don't even wanna hear.
Right, exactly, you all set?
I'm, I'm, I, even my mother is coming.
Oh, boy.
So.
Now I have to be on my guest page here.
She hasn't got it, she's like.
Okay, do we have any other business come for the meeting, we've, I know we've added some things, we've taken some things out, um, do we want to notify the amidins about the meeting that is gonna be on the nineteenth?
Sure.
I think we have.
Well, you have to, for sure.
I mean, we have, we need all people involved, and Scott needs to be there.
I don't say everyone that's on that road, would be, to be fair.
I'm sure that's a good, not a bad idea, if somebody has to.
On which road?
On.
Rus Halla and Rob's Ridge.
All the above. All the above.
On Rob's Ridge, which is.
The problem road.
Sometimes called Rus Halla.
So both, I mean, but how many people is that, a lot?
I don't know, but it's, you could just pull it off on the digital map, or the brand list.
There's only, I don't think there's one, six or eight houses on Rob's Ridge.
No, you still have to account for the vacant lots that are gonna get, get ready to sell, which Bob Hunter owns most of those that are getting ready to sell.
Yeah. Okay.
But I think it's only fair, because it's in everybody's deed, one way or the other.
Yeah, absolutely.
Where is Bob Hunter?
He's in Miami, Florida right now, until he gets in his, his, uh, van here shortly and heads over to Austin, Texas, or Southside.
Okay, so he won't be here.
We gotta find him.
Okay, anything else? We got any other business? Uh, can I, it's, I will entertain the motion.
To adjourn?
To adjourn, if nobody's got anything more.
Let's adjourn it.
Okay, Lucia, uh, Lissa, do you want this back for now, since, since we didn't, we're waiting to see?
Yeah, I'll add it to next time.
Um, how about this bill, I believe I have a copy electronically of that, I will address that for our next meeting or before.
So it's a recall?
No.
Sir, there's also pictures in that.
I saw that, I'll talk to you about that later, um, anyways, okay, if there's.
Oh.
Does that mean anything to you?
It doesn't look good.
Well, I know, but, but that's why I wanna look at the vehicle, because I have not had my eyes on this vehicle, I wasn't gonna crawl under it today, but I, I have a feeling there is a problem there, so I, I will, I will try to make some.
Twelve thousand miles.
Yeah, hiding, okay.
Twelve thousand miles, fourteen thousand.
Fourteen, okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, everybody, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.